Welcome. Good evening and welcome to the Hutchinson City Council Forum for 2025. I'm Deborah Tufel. I'll be your moderator for this evening. I'm the president and CEO of the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce, and it is a pleasure to get to host these events for the benefit of the community and to learn about the candidates that are seeking office. We also want to share our appreciation tonight to AT&amp;T and Hutchinson Regional Healthcare System, who are our sponsors of our 2025 legislative events and candidate forums. And we also want to say a big thank you to the Hutchinson Community College and their staff for always making these facilities available for events of this nature and making us feel right at home with the technology and all that goes along with that. I want to remind everyone, too, that the chamber does not endorse candidates for office. However, we do feel it is part of our mission to organize opportunities such as this for business leaders in the community to learn about public policy issues. And we do have a public policy committee that looks at many issues that impact us at the local, state, and national level. And we organize events to help you all interact with our elected officials in those seeking office. The discussion tonight will feature three races: the Southwest District seat, the Northwest District, and the at-large seat for the Hutchinson City Council. These seats will be decided at the polls during the general election on November 4th. The questions for this evening, I do have a battery of about eight questions that we will ask each of the candidates to weigh in on, and these have been prepared by our public policy committee, sometimes with input from our members who send questions to us in advance. We won't be taking questions from the audience, but we do encourage you to stick around afterwards, and please feel free to ask your own questions of the candidates if you feel free. The format for the debate tonight will start with a two-minute opening statement from each candidate, and then at the end of the debate, we will close with a one-minute closing statement. A question will be asked of the candidates within each district, and they'll have one minute to respond. The second candidate, opposing candidate, will also answer the question. And then the first candidate to answer has the opportunity for a 30-second rebuttal period. LeAnn Cox is down front with the Hutch Chamber, and she is going to be our timer this evening. So time will be up when you hear the sound of the bell, and she'll hold up the red card if you exceed your time. And then I'll reserve the right to jump in if you continue after the bell rings. I guess we're ready to get started. I would now like to introduce the candidates that are joining us on stage and begin with opening statements. And we will start with the Southwest District. We have incumbent Greg Fast and candidate Kayden Winters. We'll begin with these two. Mr. Fast.
Well, thank you, Deborah, for hosting this in the chamber and the college. I appreciate the opportunity to share and talk about my experiences over the last three and a half years on city council. I'm married with six children. We have a blended family. My wife and I were both born and raised right here in Hutchinson, Kansas. And we love this town, and I wanted to serve in this manner because I feel like the town has allowed me lots of blessings and has been good to me, and I'm trying to give back. And I will tell you that three years ago, I realize today how little I knew, and I'm still learning every single day. I think that my theme tonight is going to talk about relationships and about experience, the different things that I'm proud of even before I was elected, before I was actually seated. We met privately with somebody that wanted to give us money for an industrial park south of town. We were missing out on many opportunities to actually court large companies that are big employers because we didn't have a big enough land plot for them. So even before I was seated, we were talking about that. And that's one of the things I'm most proud of, getting that done soon after I was seated, getting that annexed into the city of Hutch so that we can get water out there and do those things to bring in industry. We currently have several people looking at that land, and I'm under non-disclosure agreements, so I can't talk about it. But just rest assured that we're working hard for economic development. I'm also proud of the billion-and-a-half-dollar Evergy plant that's coming to Hutchinson. I feel like those relationships that I created or made or fostered with Evergy have paid off. Is the dinger done?
Thank you, Mr. Fast.
Okay, I could be going.
No, we'll move on. You'll have another opportunity. So next, we're going to hear from Mr. Kayden Winters.
All right. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and the school for hosting this. My name is Kayden Winters. I'm 21, or 20 years old, going on 21 this December. And I chose to run for the seat because I, well, I grew up here in Hutch, and I've only watched it decline as I've grown. We have a, we have entire sections of the city that are dead. And it's because we have big businesses like Walmart that come in here and suck up all of the business, all the money, and all the jobs. And it has caused a steady decline in the local population. And I want to see a Hutchinson that thrives again. And as a member of the Revolutionary Communists of America, I seek to introduce Marxist-inspired policies that will cause a growth in the local economy and a return of the ability for local residents to live and thrive again. The cost of living in the past five years alone has been drastically in its increase. Hutchinson, we are actually quite lucky. The cost of housing compared to the rest of America is quite low. But our jobs and their wages are not keeping up. And so that's why I seek to introduce policies to bring unionized businesses and workers' cooperatives to Hutchinson that will provide jobs with wages. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Next, from the Northwest District, we have candidate Stacy Goss and candidate Devon Reese. We'll begin with Ms. Goss.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to the chamber and everybody who is here tonight. My name is Stacy Goss. I was born and raised in Hutch. I'm a mom of two, wife of a United States Air Force veteran, homeowner, minivan driver, and Boomerang Hutch resident. These diverse experiences give me a broad perspective and the ability to approach decisions with both a professional expertise and a real-world understanding. I have a master's degree which focused on managing complex organizations, risk management, and strategic planning. This has served me really well in my time as city council member because the problems that we face as a city are not only complex, but they are also nuanced. They require deep thought and strategic work. I also bring with me three years of hands-on experience as Hutchinson City Council member already. That's three years of studying budgets, capital improvement plans, learning the inner workings of our city, and advocating for residents with staff and fellow council members. I have board experience through Young Professionals of Reno County, the Hutchinson Library, Market Hutch, and others. Before returning to Hutch, I also served on a parks advisory board. We lived in Kansas City with experience in budgeting, project management, and community planning. So when I'm asked to make choices that affect Hutch residents, I draw not only on my education and my council experience, but a wide range of life experiences that have helped me weigh what truly will serve our community best. And I'm running for this seat again because I understand that council's decisions today impact the generations of tomorrow. No agenda, no platform, just Hutch first, always.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. And next, we will hear from Ms. Devon Reese.
Thank you, Chamber, for tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for coming. I appreciate you coming to listen to what all of us have to say. I am a native Hutchinson resident. I was gone for 10 years, so I got some experience out of the big city, Denver. I have two children, one here in town, one in Oklahoma. I have two grandchildren. One of the reasons why I'm running is because I want them to have a bright future and stay in Hutch. That is one of the problems that we have, is people don't stay here. I am also running because we need to beautify Hutch. I don't know if you come into town from any direction, but every direction I've come in town from, the weeds are taller than I am, and I am 5'3". I'm also running to help generate new business using our existing platforms that we have here and making those thrive. Hutch needs to grow. It is a great town. This is where people like to raise their kids. But we need our kids to stay here and help us grow as well. Thank you again for coming and your time tonight.
Thanks to you both. Next, we'll move on to the at-large district, where we have candidates Carlton Duke DeVal and Darren Truitt. And we will first hear from Mr. Duke DeVal.
Good evening. My name is Duke DeVal, and I'm running because I felt it necessary that we have fresh faces and new voices in the public. And I'm also, I'm running because of taxes. I think our taxes are getting out of hand. Also, I'm looking at accountability, transparency. I plan to work for the entire city since I'm at-large. And we talk a lot about downtown revitalization, and that's all well and good, but we seem to forget other parts of town, other parts of towns that we should be looking at also. And like the South Side, if the bond issue passes for the school, we won't have any schools south of Seventh Street. And so the South Side is going to be left out. I also want a safe environment for the most vulnerable people, children and seniors. We just need to have safe areas for them to have recreation, and we're doing a pretty good job at that right now. And another issue, it's sort of a pet peeve of mine, is food and house housing. Nobody should ever go hungry in Hutchinson, Kansas. And housing, we're having, I hear a lot about Strawn building north of Plum Creek, and that's fine and good, but that's not doing anything for our school district. It helps the city, of course. But anyways, that's about all I have to say today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal. And next, we will hear from Mr. Darren Truitt.
Good evening, Chamber. Thanks for having us here tonight, everybody. Thanks for coming out. Yes, my name is Darren Truitt, and I am a, about a 25-year, been in city Hutch for about 25 years. I moved here in 2000 and became an employee on the City Hutchinson Police Department, where I retired last July after 24 years. Retired as a police sergeant. I have my wife Tiffany, and I have my son and daughter and their spouses. And I now have two beautiful baby granddaughters, one 16 months and one 15 weeks. Basically, I chose to run because I served this community for 24 years, and I was proud to do it. And I feel like that this is a way to continue serving our community, helping people. I've always enjoyed helping people. I, like I said, I'm retired. I have, actually have rental properties. I manage some rental properties. One of the biggest things I hear is taxes, and I understand what property tax costs when I go to pay my taxes. I understand things are expensive, but I feel like we need to take a look at where our money's being spent, and we might have to make some sacrifices. But I feel like we can maybe at least keep our taxes where it's at or try to lower it. One of the things that I keep hearing people talk about is accountability and transparency. So when I announced that I was running for city council, I made a promise that I would go to every city council meeting. And that was in April. And I have. I've been to every one. And I can tell you, that has been very, very beneficial. I have learned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Truitt, for following the rules. All right. Okay, so candidates, I don't know if we appropriately thanked you. All of you in the audience, thank you for being here. Let's show these candidates a round of applause. It's not easy being up here on the hot seat. So we're going to get started with questions. And just as a reminder to the audience, please be respectful to the candidates and to your neighbors by keeping noise to a minimum. I'm also going to remind the candidates, we're going to start the question. The first question with the Southwest District, after the one-minute response is you'll have an opportunity for a rebuttal. I'm not going to call on each and every one of you to ask if you have a rebuttal. If you simply have a rebuttal after the candidate finishes speaking, jump in and do so. And then the second question will start with the next district and answer in opposite order of the first one so that not everyone is answering first. So we'll begin the first question with Southwest District candidate Greg Fast. Explain what you believe are the most important issues facing Hutchinson and the role the city council can play in fixing these issues.
I think the most important issue is getting jobs here, increasing our tax base. We're working on housing and incentivizing the housing to be built. But we are this close to having some more blue-collar jobs here. I think that is one thing. We're working on BLIGHT to clean up our town, as been mentioned before. We're working on making it easier for people to build homes and to do business in Hutchinson. We continue to make progress on that. I think, I think for me, it's just, you know, just making our town welcoming. And we have so much in our town to be proud of. And again, I think that the current council is doing a good job. And we're continuing to work on, again, the grass that needs to be mowed, policies that help with that, policies that help with BLIGHT. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Kayden Winters.
I agree with Mr. Fast that the two big issues here in Hutchinson are jobs and housing. Where we differ is we need the right kind of jobs and the right kind of housing. We need jobs that are going to pay fair wages and housing that is affordable. And that is why I believe we need city-owned housing with rent-controlled rent, with salary-based rent. And we need unionized jobs where workers have control over their workplace and over their wage. Thank you.
Well, I totally disagree. I don't think it's in the city's lane to provide housing. We can provide incentives for people to build houses so that people can own their own homes. That's where we might differ a little bit. I feel like, I don't think we need rent-controlled housing like San Francisco has.
Next, we'll hear from Northwest District Stacy Goss.
Can you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure. Explain what you believe are the most important issues facing Hutchinson and the role the city council can play in fixing these issues.
So I believe that the most important role for a city council outside of what is actually described in our, the things that give us our power through administration, the Articles of Administration, are economic development. And one of those is to remove regulatory hurdles through working with the chamber. So we expedite every request for information that is put to us by the chamber, whether this is site visits, requests for information about utilities, and what can the city offer in terms of power and water, et cetera. And so with the Evergy plant that will provide its first power in 2030, we have an opportunity to welcome a number of various industries that chase that type of power. There are also state incentives that will come into play when businesses are considering Reno County and Hutchinson as a whole. So with that, they're going to look at how many rooftops are available, and then retail chases rooftops. So all in all, it's a combination deal with economic development.
Thank you, Ms. Goss, and Ms. Devon Reese.
I will agree with a lot of people. Some of our problem is housing. It is growth of new business. It is also our taxes. Our taxes are some of the highest in the state, and we are not one of the largest populated cities in the state. Another one of our problems is drug overdoses. We have to find out why this is happening and how to stop it and control it. Mental illness is a problem in town. We have this problem down at A Street Park that it needs to be addressed. I know the city has been working on that, but we need to continue working on that and help develop a sound solution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. And next, we'll hear from at-large district candidate, Mr. DeVal.
Could you restate the question?
Of course. Explain what you believe are the most important issues facing Hutchinson and the role the city council can play in fixing these issues.
Well, my previous speakers here have all said jobs and housing, industry, our infrastructure needs to have a hard look at. We have done quite a bit of work, but a lot of things were shut down. There was something going on where we were going to have them come in. We got a grant, and then it was withdrawn for taking down trees in town. And it's horrible. You see all these dead trees just standing there. And all that happens is eventually they blow down and destroy property. And as I said before, food and house housing are very important. For, we have very many people in the city that don't eat good meals every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal. And next, we'll hear from Mr. Truitt.
I agree with just about everybody at their table. I believe a lot of our biggest issues are jobs and housing. I think that the city, one of the things I've found in seeing with the housing is, I feel like we need to figure out a way to make it easier to get stuff done. An example was, and Mr. Strong's been mentioned, going to build 30, 40 houses and had to fight with the city council on sidewalks because he's the only one to put one sidewalk. To me, that's common sense. Let's, if that's what it's going to take to get houses, let's make government simpler. Let's use common sense and do what we have to do to get what we need done here. I think a lot of that too is with business. We, you know, we got to make it simple, make it easy, make it easy for companies to come in and want to come in and...
Thank you, Mr. Truitt. Moving on to question two, if there are no rebuttals. The next question will begin with Northwest District candidate, Ms. Devon Reese, on this question. What is your approach to balancing spending and taxes while weighing the competing priorities of the city?
I think we need to remember what the city and our tax dollars are to go for. They are to go for street and road repairs, daily operation of the city, which includes police and fire. We also need to remember that the city's job is not to fund charities. Charities, they are good, but it's not the city's responsibility to fund those organizations. If people want to donate to those organizations, it is on land. It is not on the city. Thank you.
And next, we'll hear from Ms. Goss.
Yes, so the approach to balancing spending, the city council receives the budget after it's created by city staff, by the city manager. And then kind of behind the scenes, what we do is we take off certain things. So by the time the public sees it, through all of our workshopping, especially for this year, for instance, we already removed thousands and thousands of dollars from projects. So we do balance projects with goals and with wants and needs. And in regards to nonprofits, we are actually legally obligated to fund certain nonprofits through settlement funding as well as taxes that are prescribed by the state. So the nonprofits that we have funded have been through ARPA funds, have been through alcohol tax funds that we are required by law to fund. And with that, we had excess in funds this year.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. Moving on to the at-large district, we'll begin with Mr. Truitt.
Thank you. I think the biggest approach to balancing our spending is we got to get back to the basics. Basically, what I refer to as the three Ps, which is public safety, plumbing, which is dealing with the water and sewer, and potholes, which is dealing with the street. You know, I look at, if I'm elected, I'm going to look at this budget like I do my own personal budget at home. I'm going to take care of my necessities first, and then if I got some play money later on for other things, we're going to do it. But we've got to take care, and again, go on to some of these council meetings and hearing issues that we have with our water treatment plant, issues we have with our sewer treatment plant, millions of dollars that we're going to have to spend. And, you know, one of the biggest things people complain about are the potholes in the streets. We got to make sure the street department has the money. They need to fix that and keep our streets up. We've got, I think we're doing pretty good, taking care of the police department, fire department.
Thank you, Mr. Truitt, and Mr. DeVal.
Could you restate the question?
Sure. What's your approach to balancing spending and taxes while weighing the competing priorities of the city?
Yes, I've thought about this quite a lot. And one thing we need to do is if we do budget cuts, we need to do it across the board, not just one area. So it's fair and equitable. And we need to really take a hard look at where our money is going and have priorities. We need to prioritize, just like Mr. Truitt just stated, that we have to have some semblance of what our needs really are and what is needed and what can go on the back burner. And I was in sales for a while, and that's called an action plan. And you put it together, and you hope that everything comes out. But there's, we need the manpower. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal. And next, we'll move on to the Southwest District, beginning with Kayden Winters.
May you restate the question, please?
Sure. What is your approach to balancing spending and taxes while weighing competing priorities of the city?
I think if I would focus the city's budget towards the things that people need, the people of Hutchinson and not corporations that come here to use our resources and our people and leave us in the dust. And those things are housing, food, and healthcare. And so I do think that there should be some budget cuts to non-essential spending, such as the golf course. And then instead of not collecting that money, we can redirect that funding towards essential items, especially something that I've mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. And next, we'll hear from Mr. Fast.
Well, I agree with all of those things. We do, as a council, look very closely at the budget. I want to talk about some ways that we've cut the budget recently. It's already been mentioned by Stacy. We've cut it by tens of thousands of dollars. But we've, we are bringing a lot of the work back in the house that we contract out for engineering services. We also happenstance met with an EPA person back to relationships that we fostered a little bit. She came in. We have remediation wells south of town. We're saving $200,000 to $250,000 a year because of those relationships that the city manager and I created with somebody that is with the EPA that could make a difference. with somebody that, that is with the EPA that could make a difference in what we have to do. Those, those remediation wells have not been, I, I mean, they, they are completely clean and have been for years. And somebody finally said, hey.
Thank you, Mr. Fast. Any rebuttal? No, all right. We'll move on to question three. So this one, we'll start with the at-large district. Mr. DeVal, you'll go first. What role should the city play in addressing housing, infill, rehabilitation, and development as a key driver of economic development?
That is a question that has been on my mind also. Affordable house housing. And unfortunately, right now, interest rates are really high. So people buying a new home, well, I feel sorry for them. And we do need new, more housing here. The only houses that get built, I think, are the high school homes, except now Mr. Strong is building up there north of town. But in the center of town, we need to fix up some of the older structures, help people stay in their homes. The elderly, they need the help. And young families trying to struggle, working two or three jobs to make a living, to stay in their homes. It's not a good.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal. And now we'll hear from Mr. Truwan.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. What role should the city play in addressing housing, infill, rehabilitation, and development as a key driver of economic development?
I've got some mixed feelings about this. I feel like the, the city should be somewhat involved in, in housing and the rehabilitation of the housing we have. But I also feel like that should be in the private practice too. You know, so I, I just don't think government needs to be involved in, in a lot of that. One thing I, I do feel that, like rehabilitating houses and like Mr. DeVal said, and some of the houses in the South Park town. Again, I think we need to figure out a way to make it simpler and less restrictions to rehabilitate the houses. And I mean, we gotta, we gotta have codes and we gotta follow the codes. But too many times in this city, I've heard, well, you can't do that. You can't do that. And I wanna hear the city say, what can we do to help you to get this house done and, and make things nicer?
Thank you, Mr. Truwan. Next, we'll move on to the Southwest District and beginning with Mr. Greg Fast.
Well, I appreciate the question about housing. I could go on and on about what, what we're trying to do as a city to try to help with housing. Specifically, the Community Foundation has just put six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the table to help match for people that want to do infill housing. That is how we're helping locally. There are many, many state and federal programs. Currently, the Landmark is, is doing thirty-six apartments. And that's all, that's all done through different, different programs and private investment. We are talking internally on how do we, how do we help? We're doing some things with some, some plans for houses that are pre-drawn, that are ready to go. If you wanna build a house, if you wanna do infill on a lot, we'll give you the lot, we'll give you the plans, we'll make it easy for you. Those kind of things are going on. Those are the kind of ways that I feel like we can help.
Thank you, Mr. Fast, and Mr. Winters.
As I said in my opening speech, I believe that the city council should begin construction of city-owned apartment buildings for lower-income residents that would be capped at a percentage of income. I'd have to look at the median income of Hutchinson residents before I could put a definite number on that. But and this would give a, a stepping stone for people to get out of poverty, out of homelessness, give kids out of high school a way to get out of their parents' homes and become members of society. And I don't believe this should fully take over from the private housing industry, but it should supplement it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Next, for the Northwest District, we'll hear from Ms. Stacy Goss.
Thank you. So what role should city government play in housing, refill, and development as economic development? In the month of June alone, we approved around a hundred and fifty housing units. Some of those fell through because they were low-income grants that they were seeking. But the others were thirty-six in Monroe and, and that project alone, I believe, was forty, forty houses. We also streamlined, while I've been on council, we streamlined the accessory dwelling unit program, the ADU program. We're currently working to streamline the use of SIP panels, which New Beginnings used to build the tiny homes by eighth and Main. And yes, the government is not involved in the manner that we're building houses. But as a council member, we have the ability to remove the regulations that are unnecessary or cause strife for builders. We have a neighborhood revitalization program that covers the entire city with a, a deeper emphasis on those buildings south of Eleventh Street. They also stack with incentives from the county.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. And next we'll hear from Ms. Devon Reese.
I think that we need to make it less obstacles for people to get housing, whether it's through grants for first-time homeowners, whether it's through grants for single moms of kids. I also think that we need to make the restrictions on building land up less evasive. We need to also bring in other contractors. It should not just be one contractor for a plot of land. I lived in Colorado for ten years and how they developed their neighborhoods was bringing in more than one contractor to build houses a little faster because you had more than one contractor doing it at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese, and rebuttal?
Absolutely. So when it comes to individual property rights, though, the council has nothing to do with that. And any developer is obligated to, or has the right to build on their own property or allow other builders on their property. And when it comes to grant funding specifically, like we've seen with the Strong buildings, those are granted to the specific developer and they don't usually shop that out. They'll use subcontractors. But you have one developer developing the entire neighborhood. And then after that, they can sell off, for instance, as we've seen in other neighborhoods.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, and this one will begin with Southwest District Kate Winters. How do you balance the basic priorities to operate the city such as public safety and immediate infrastructure needs while planning for strategic investments for economic development and downtown revitalization?
Well, I definitely think public safety is one of the top five priorities of the city. And that should always be a, a priority of the city council. I do believe that we need to shift focus towards revitalization to draw more interest from outside of town and to keep people staying in Hutchinson. And I want to make Hutchinson the center of Reno County again, a position that's been stolen by Wichita. And to do that, sacrifices are gonna have to be made in the balance. Thank you.
And Mr. Fast?
Well, as you know, downtown's near and dear to my heart. And, and I would say to Mr. Winters, we do have housing that is subsidized by the federal government. It's called hub housing, that people, that it's rent controlled based on your, on your income. But, but I, I love our downtown. But we, again, let's talk about relationships. I've met with the Lieutenant Governor multiple occasions and we have thirteen and a half million dollars coming to our city on incremental tax financing of state tax dollars that are already there. It's no increase to our local taxpayers because of relationships that we forge at city council to, to invigorate Memorial Hall, the Cosmos Sphere, and the Landmark, the bottom floor of the Landmark Hotel. We're gonna plop down eighty more people in the middle of our downtown with those apartments. I'm excited about that. I think that is at the top of my priority list.
Thank you, Mr. Fast. Next, we'll move on to the Northwest District, Mr. Reese. I'm sorry, Ms. Reese. Apologies.
No problems. We need to revitalize downtown. Definitely, we have business owners who, right now, have a problem with people vandalizing their businesses because of people at Avenue A Park. We need to help them, support them in every way possible. Because the only way to make Hutchinson grow is to make it safe and to make it nice and inviting. We have a great thing in Hutchinson with our murals that has beautified Hutchinson and people do come to look at those. We also need to help bring businesses here by lowering our taxes. We are not growing because our taxes are too high and businesses don't come here for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. And next we'll hear from Ms. Stacy Goss. Will you get the question, please?
Sure.
How do you balance the basic priorities to operate the city such as public safety and immediate infrastructure needs while planning for strategic investments for economic development and downtown revitalization?
So the, the biggest infrastructure need that we have prioritized as a current city council is that of water. So this summer, we funded a million-dollar study to determine whether or not our current wastewater treatment facility is viable, if it needs repairs. We know it needs repairs, but to what level? So once we have the grasp of what our water infrastructure needs, that is the most basic priority. That will tell us what growth we can possibly accomplish. Because if we're chasing deals that need millions of gallons every single day and we ink a deal that needs that kind of water, but yet we can't provide the infrastructure, then we are doing absolutely no good. And we, we wouldn't be able to support the project in the short term or in the long term. And so water is the most basic need. As a council, we have prioritized, we have prioritized that. And in the near future and in the distant future, we anticipate strategic investments in our water.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. Next, we'll move on to the at-large district and we'll begin with Mr. Truwan. Of course. How do you balance the basic priorities to operate the city such as public safety and immediate infrastructure needs while planning for strategic investments for economic development and downtown revitalization?
Well, like I said before, you have to, we, we've gotta make sure we spend our money on our, our necessities. Make sure all that's going. And then I think, I think it's a deal where you work with community groups like the Chamber and, and other organizations. And like Mr. Fast said, the state, and trying to bring in grant money. One of the things I've seen with an issue downtown and I've heard complaints about this multiple times is the, the restrictions and, and, you know, always something popping up when, you know, you wanna do something and, and again, issues where the restrictions on what the city will let you do. I go back to what I said a little bit ago. We need to make sure we can tell people, hey, let's do what we can. What can we do to help you and not tell you no?
Thank you, Mr. Truwan. And now we'll hear from Mr. DeVal.
Yes. I agree with a lot that's been said up here. And I made a statement before about cutting across the board. Let me rephrase that. Police, fire, EMS should not be cut. We should support that a hundred percent. And besides that, I look at downtown and we still have empty storefronts. I see shops, little boutiques that open up and they come and go really fast sometimes, and that's unfortunate. But I don't know if we'll ever get big stores in downtown anymore. I think that's a thing of the past. And, but we still need to get business into town and, and shopping. If you come to this town and you're looking for a place to live and.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal.
Does anybody get a rebuttal or just?
You can only rebut your opponent after the question. Yeah, okay. So the next question, and this one will start with the Northwest District, Stacy Goss. What investments should the city make to make Hutchinson more attractive, to present a positive image to prospective residents, businesses, and young professionals?
So yeah, I, I can actually speak to this question from experience because my husband and I lived, lived this reality. So we moved back five years ago from Kansas City Metro. And we moved back because we knew the community. I grew up here, born and raised. But if you don't know the community and you're looking for somewhere to live, looking for a slower pace of life, for instance, lower cost of living, then the question you're gonna ask is, what's in it for me? And that's where the Make My Move program that we funded at the beginning of this year comes into play. If you're not familiar, I encourage you to look into it. We don't have enough time during this response to explain it. But we also need a vibrant arts and entertainment district. And we have that now, but we could always make improvements, which is why I've been committed to making Memorial Hall a destination for entertainment. And we will accomplish that with our Star Bone. And what decides our fate as a community is what we build. So my husband and I left Kansas City, our forty-five-minute commute's our triple-price daycare. And we know that there are people waiting behind us to do the exact same thing.
Thank you, Ms. Goss, and Ms. Reese.
We need to, number one, one of the reasons why we are not growing in Hutchinson is because of our sales tax, so those need to be lowered. We also need to incorporate businesses that aren't just in Wichita, but are making an attraction here. Why do people come to Hutch? We want them to come because of our attractions. We have four attractions in Hutchinson proper. We need more than four. We also need to make sure that our town is beautiful by mowing our lawns. There's, we used to have the prisoners mow the lawns. Why do we not do that anymore? That was not an expense to Hutch as they have all the materials, they have the equipment to do it. I know it's not a hundred percent free labor, but it is cheaper labor and it'll get done where it was not done this year.
Thank you, and I get thirty seconds?
Sure.
So Department of Corrections won't do that program any longer. And I completely disagree that there's only four things to do in Hutch. I have a three-year-old and a six-year-old and we have at least four things on our calendar every single weekend. And it's not just the Cosmos Sphere and it's not just Strataca. I'm claustrophobic and I won't go to Strataca. No offense to them, I think they're a wonderful program. But there is a ton to do in Hutch, especially if you, if you just open your eyes and look. And we will not build our community and make our community better by being lax on code, to speak to Darren Truwan's responding to your response, Ms. Reese. That is something that I absolutely refuse to let go.
Thank you. Next, for the at-large district, we'll hear from Mr. DeVal.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Of course. What investments should the city make to make Hutchinson more attractive, to present a positive image to prospective residents, businesses, and young professionals?
We can do a lot just by taking care of what we see, taking care of our yards. We need to make downtown beautiful. And I agree with Ms. Goss that the arts is lacking in this town. This is what people want. It's not, you can only go, if you're a resident here, you can only go to the Salt Museum and to the Cosmos Sphere just so many times, and that's it. But there is a lot of things going on, especially for the young people. I am on the Board of Commissioners for Hutch Red and we run an extensive programs for the youth and for adults. So there are things to do here in town. But you need to be able to go out and find them and to make the town more accessible to the new people.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal. And next, Mr. Truwan.
Would you ask the question again?
Of course. What investments should the city make to make Hutchinson more attractive, to present a positive image to prospective residents, businesses, and young professionals?
I think we need to figure out ways to promote what we have going on here. I, I do agree that, I believe that. I do agree that, I believe, like I said, I moved here in two thousand. I've always thought there was lots, I always hear people say there's not much to do in this town. And I feel there is, you know, you have to be able to find it, you have to want to find it. I think we need, you know, I'm very hopeful that we can get Memorial Hall turned around. I talked to somebody that day. You know, we're discussing the Little Red Shed over there on Old K-61. They have concerts there. Why can't we do that here? I think if we can get more of that going, you know, and start bringing more people in, people are going to see that we have something here. Now, to address something that was mentioned, I never said that we should lower our codes. I'm saying that we need to figure out how we can stay within our codes, because I said we need codes, but we also have to figure out how to help people and get the job done.
Thank you, Mr. Truwan. Next, we'll hear from Southwest District, starting with Mr. Fast.
I think that we continue to work on how we promote our city. I think we have a lot to be proud of. We, I own a lawn service by trade, and so I'm out, I know lots and lots of people. And I've come to know many people are moving here from the East Coast, West Coast, from Denver, Ms. Reese, you're a good example of that. But, but they're moving here because of the low cost of living, and they like Hutchinson. And, you know, again, we're working as a council to clean up light and to try to make this town more attractive. Again, as I said, there's money coming in, state money, that is not going to affect our local taxpayers to help make our town more attractive. And we continue to expand, for example, our park trails, which is what young people want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Fast. And Mr. Winters?
So, something I was going to mention before is I believe the city needs to invest heavily in our sidewalk infrastructure, not just to repair it and make it walkable again. Because there are blocks near my house where the sidewalks are almost unwalkable. But I also believe we need to make it inviting, more green space, places to sit, like benches along sidewalks, so that people want to get out and not just go from A to B in their car. Something else, if elected, that I'd want to look into is perhaps doing more of the fairgrounds outside of fair season. I'm not sure entirely on the jurisdiction over the fairgrounds area, but I know there are some things, like the flea market, that come into town that aren't very well advertised, and I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kayden, you mentioned sidewalks. We've changed our sidewalk policy to, when we do a road, we go from the center of the road, we repave the road. If the curbing needs redone, we do that. And we also go up on the sidewalk. The sidewalk program we had before was only getting just a few hundred feet of sidewalk down. So, we're trying to be more efficient on how we run the city. And when we take care of a road, we're going to take care of it, the sidewalks as well. Just, just for information for those out there that want to hear about what we're trying to do as a city to be efficient.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Outlarge District, Mr. Truwan, and followed by Mr. DeVall. Parks, trails, and cultural opportunities contribute to quality of life for all residents. What investments should the city prioritize to strengthen these amenities?
I've got a lot of mixed feelings about that. I love the park system we have. We do have a very nice park system. It needs to be, you know, the problem is, is we keep hearing about, we're raising taxes, we're raising taxes, and I don't want to raise taxes. But the problem is, is after you take care of your necessities, we've got to see how much, and I don't, I hate saying this, but at some point in time, our parks may have to be put aside so that we can get the necessities done. You know, I actually stood and talked to some park employees the other day, and their biggest gripe was we keep adding parks, and they're not having employees. And, you know, it was mentioned that grasses get mowed. The park department mows most of the grass in town. And you've got to give those guys a break, because it's been raining all year. Everybody knows, I mean, I can't keep up with my grass, you know? So, the more you put on our employees, the more you're going to have.
Thank you, Mr. Truwan. And next, we'll hear from Mr. DeVall.
Parks and trails, that is a talking point for sure. I agree almost a hundred percent with my opponent's comments. And how many parks do we need? But I also understand that the major parks are on, around the city, not inside the city. And that's been an issue. And that was brought up at a city council meeting, I believe, one day, one night. But anyways, we do need to, if we're cutting budgets, yes, we'd have to look at parks and trails for sure. And do we need all that we have, or can we get by with what we have? Or can we cut some of it?
Thank you, Mr. DeVall. Next, we'll move on to the Southwest District, beginning with Mr. Winters.
So, I do enjoy our parks and our trails here in Hutchinson. We go to Nature Center, which was one of my favorite places to go when I was younger, have a picnic with my mom and my brothers. But as others have mentioned, we have to make the hard decision sometimes of when we have to give up some of those parks for the things that are needed. And when people don't have a bed to sleep in, or don't know if they're going to have a warm meal that day, I think we might have to cut some of those trails. Not permanently, but it is something that I believe may have to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. And Mr. Fast?
Well, I think that parks and trails are very important for quality of life here. And, and we do have our fair share of parks. I certainly cannot argue that. I will say we have an accredited zoo, which is very unique for a town our size. It's a, it's a great attraction in our, in our city. And, and, you know, you touched on it, and it is, we do have, according to benchmarking that I've seen in comparable cities, we do have more parks per capita, or more acreage per capita than cities of like size. And, and that is, you know, I think that's where maybe we could be a little more efficient. Although, you know, if a neighborhood wants a park, and they're willing to help pay for it, I think, I think we ought to consider that. And there are, again, it is totally a quality of life issue, and I think we have good parks in a lot of them.
I agree with Mr. Fast that if a community wants to keep a park, that should absolutely be the decision of the people that live in that area. And that's why I think it would be good to make, perhaps, look at selling off those parks to perhaps a private owner, or maybe even a neighborhood organization, like an HOA or some other kind of community organized situation, or some kind of local fundraising event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Next, we'll move to the Northwest District, beginning with Ms. Reese.
I agree with Mr. Truwan. I think that we have lots of very nice parks. It is something that I think that can be put on hold. We have a trail system that's very nice, and people use it. It is something that is a quality of life that a lot of people enjoy. I do want to just go back to reiterate, I was saying, main attractions that attract people from other cities in my last comment. And there are still only four. Yes, there are lots of things to do here in Hutch, and the trails and the park systems are one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. And Ms. Goss?
I would say all you all need to get out into our parks a lot more, because they are absolutely fabulous. And it's easy to say that they are the low-hanging fruit, and they're the first thing that we're going to cut. And then, where do you stop after that? Because those are your quality of life things, and those are the things that young people are looking for when they're choosing a community that they want to raise their children. And if you yourself, I see, no offense, I see a lot of people who are maybe outside of their child-rearing age here. And if you think back to the things that you did with your children when you had young ones in your home, you probably took them to the parks quite a bit. And so, that's why, as a mom, I strongly believe in our park system. I'm not saying that I'm budgeting parks over water, or parks over filling potholes, or parks over staff raises or anything like that. But it is not something that I'm just willing to say is absolutely the first thing that we're going to cut. And I think that if you went to individual neighborhoods and you said, hey, we're going to take your park away, because it's just extra space, and we don't see anybody here, you're going to have to pry it out of their cul-de-sac hands.
Thank you, Ms. Goss.
I just want to say, I'm not saying that we need to cut our park system. I'm saying we need to put it on hold and prioritize some other things over it for a little while. Yes, we need the parks. The parks are great here in town.
Okay, moving on to the next question, and this one will start with Southwest District, Mr. Fast. If elected, how would you plan to make yourself available to your constituents?
Well, I think I've done a pretty good job of that in the last three and a half years. You do get a response from me. If you email me, my address and phone number are public. I certainly have made myself available. And again, relationships matter, and experience matters. Most recently, met with Dr. Marsh's office about our floodplain map. I mean, those are relationships that I can pick up the phone and call. And I think those relationships are important. And it's very important to hear from those of you sitting out in the audience on what you feel like the needs are of the city and how I can help you as a councilperson. I mean, this is, this has become my life. I've been involuntary, put into retirement, kind of involuntary, because this does take a lot of time. And I hope that the people in my district feel like they can contact me at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Fast. Mr. Winters?
May I repeat the question, please?
Yes. If elected, how would you plan to make yourself available to constituents?
Well, similarly, my business email is public, and I tend to respond within a few days at most. And I'm sure my phone number is also public. And I try to go to as many community events as I can. And as a member of the RCA, I do plan, win or lose, to expand that organization into Hutchinson and try to organize frequent events with that, which I will welcome any member of Hutchinson to come, talk with me, and any potential future members, and just get to know me. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
And what is the RPA?
The RPA, Revolutionary Communists of America Party.
Okay.
Next, we'll move on to the Northwest District, Stacy Goss.
So, obviously, you can find me at every city council meeting, but I also give people my personal cell phone number on the regular. I have a Facebook page. I answer my email. I answer text messages at all hours of the night. I would say I am constantly available. And with that, not only am I available, but I'm willing to put in the work and do the research for people. So, not just serving the people who are within a particular district. I have been at large for the last two and a half years. But our council that we currently have, we make it a point to serve everybody within the city of Hutch regardless of boundaries and regardless of party. And I firmly believe that if you don't have a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. And that's something that I'm willing to do, not only for myself, but for anybody else who needs to make space and have their voice heard. And I'm willing to lend my voice to people who need representation, who need to be advocated for in hearings, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. And Ms. Reese?
I, number one, want to have a meeting, an open table meeting, like, let's just say it'll be the third Friday of every month, where anybody would be invited to come and ask questions of any type. It would not matter what district the people are in. My phone number is available. My email is available. I am on Facebook for myself, as well as running for this office. I feel like most people who are currently in city council and in public office have all of that available and do a very good job of that. So, I think I would follow those guidelines as well.
I would like to add that you can also find me in one of our city parks at least fifteen hours every single week.
Thank you both. Next, we'll hear from Outlarge District, Mr. Truwan.
This is, it's a good question. Being a police officer for twenty-four years in the city, there's multiple people I'm looking at in the congregation, or the audience here. I let, probably all have my phone number already, and it's called. In fact, yesterday, I had a friend of mine call me and said he's had a coworker that had an issue with something at the state fairgrounds, and was wanting to know how to get ahold of the city. And, and to get the problem taken care of, and said, well, I don't think that's going to be a city problem, so I made a phone call for him. Which, being a police officer, again, for twenty-four years, I've got a lot of contacts. I know people to contact. Actually called, and this person talked to the director of the fair. And within about thirty minutes, I had him to answer. Not going to really fix the problem for him, but I was there available for him, and he got him to answer. And I've done that, a year and a half I've been retired, and I still get phone calls from people. So, when I...
Thank you, Mr. Truwan. And next, we'll hear from Mr. DeVall.
Yes, I plan on, if I am elected, to find a place where I can at least meet once a month or more with constituents. And my phone number is out there. My email address is out there. And I will talk to anybody. There's people in the audience that understand that, and I do love to talk. And I am concerned about what's going on in the community. So, please, always talk to us, no matter who gets elected. If you just come and approach us and talk, ask a question, we'll be more than happy. And if you can't find me on the phone, or texting me, or whatever, I'm at the Rusty Needle every Tuesday for Taco Tuesday. So, at noon.
Thank you all. Okay, we'll move on to the last question before closing statements. What do you think the city's role is in addressing homelessness in our community? And this will first be addressed by Ms. Reese from the Northwest District. What do you think the city's role is in addressing homelessness in our community?
Homelessness is a tragic thing for anybody. One of the reasons why I think our homeless population is going to grow is because of our city taxes. We heard at the last city council meeting that people feel like they're being taxed out of their homes. So, I do think that we need to address our sales tax and lower it. We don't need to increase it. We need to prioritize what we have in our city budget and make it more efficient, more accountable, and transparent. If we're going to address homelessness as it is right now, we need to make more space. And in order to make more space, we need to grow entities that are already here.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. And Ms. Goss?
Absolutely. So, I believe that the city's role in homelessness is actually, and this isn't the answer that you want to hear, but it's actually not a whole heck of a lot. We talked about this for probably two hours at a recent council meeting. And we have laws and the books about all of the nuisance issues that have been arising. And essentially, we can't arrest people just for being homeless. That's not a solution. However, you get solutions by putting housing first, which is a priority that we have made while I've been mayor, by supporting and trying to assist with low-income housing developments to bring those in. to bring those into town. Um, and then the other thing is, of course, um, by continuing to use our parks, because when parks are full and they are full of lots of variety of people, um, then it drives out the unwanted people, um, who may be doing, um, un- unfavorable, uh, things in the park.
Thank you, Ms. Goss, and next, the at-large district, Mr. DeVal.
Yeah, the homeless is, uh, sort of one of my pet peeves, and, uh, it is an issue, and it's batting around back and forth forever, and it's not just the city of Hutch. Uh, the last city council meeting, an issue was brought up that they need to run people out of Avenue A Park, and luckily, the chief of police was there, and he explained to them that First Amendment rights and a few other rights, you just can't do that. Everybody has equal rights to the park, but we can con- control drug usage and other unfavorable activities at our parks. But we do need housed housing. We need to have these people sheltered during the winter and the heat of the summer.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal. Mr. Truwan?
So the homeless population, uh, is something I got to deal with on a regular basis prior to retiring from the police department. Uh, you gotta understand that majority of these homeless people, it's been mentioned a couple times about getting them homes and stuff, you gotta understand, most of them have mental illness or are on drugs, and, uh, multiple times I tried to offer services to these people, and they don't wanna, they, they, and I hate to say it, it sounds bad, that they wanna be homeless. I actually, uh, it was the last, whatever council meeting we had, were a couple, uh, ago, where we were talking about, uh, uh, the homeless issue. I brought, I stood up and I spoke, and said, "What we need to do is we need to get all of our community organizations together, horizons, uh, new beginnings, uh, anybody that deals with the homeless, the mental illness, drug issues." I feel like we need to make a, I, I call it a task force. We bring everybody together, and when we have...
We have one already, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Truwan, and there's a rebuttal from Mr. DeVal.
Yes, I, uh, disagree with the fact that not everybody wants to be on the streets. It's a harsh life, and yes, we have people on drugs. Unfortunately, there's a lot of veterans on our streets, and we have to address issues, and I agree with Mr. Truwan about a task force to get to the bottom of this, this issue, and it's gotta happen soon.
Thank you both, and next for the Southwest District, Mr. Winters.
So, uh, I do believe that homelessness is one of the top priorities for any community to tackle, and it is a very tough one, um, because it's a, it's caused by societal issues, and it's also caused by criminal issues. Um, I believe low-cost housing would significantly help with the homelessness issue, but we also do need to focus on, uh, the drug issue, a drug issue that Hutchinson has had for a long time. We need to focus funding towards rehabilitation programs, uh, work with the state to try and pull these people up out of the rut they've fallen into. Um, because while it can be challenging, we must remember that these are people, these are our fellow Americans, and it is our duty to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters, and Mr. Fast.
Uh, I would say that when we speak about homelessness, we're, we're really talking about substance abuse and mental illness. Um, the three go hand in hand, and, and if you want to come to the coalition meeting that three years ago I started, it's at, uh, the second Thursday at nine-thirty at United Way. We have, the chief of police is usually there, representing from the police department, sheriff's department, United Way, New Beginnings. All of us get in a room and try to figure out how to make progress on this problem. And as we learned a- a- at the last council meeting, and we've, or us on council have known this, we have to be very careful of stepping on the Fourth and the Fourteenth Amendment for folks that, you know, have every right to be in our parks and to have their stuff with them. So it is, the, the problem comes in when it affects business, specifically downtown.
Thank you. All right, next, we're ready for closing statements, and the order will be the at-large district, followed by Northwest District and Southwest, and so we will begin with Mr. Darren Truwan.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanna say that, uh, like I said before, I've served my community for twenty-three years as a police officer. I would like to continue to serve, uh, on the city council, uh, helps solve problems, uh, bring a common sense approach. Uh, like I said, under the one, one question, I, I am always available. My phone number's out there. I'm on Facebook, and if you, uh, have any questions, you can message me or get my phone number and call me, and I will contact you as soon as I can, and I'd appreciate your vote in November.
Thank you. Mr. DeVal?
Yes, um, to restate, uh, what we've said here tonight, a lot of good ideas have come up, and I hope we can get them taken care of, and a lot of the issues are very important to all of us, and the big thing is we need shopping and jobs. You don't get people to come here if you, we have Walmart and Kohl's and maybe TJ Maxx, and that's about it. So if you're a young couple, the wife looks at the shopping and says, "Now, let's go somewhere else." And I know Wichita's only thirty minutes away, thirty-five minutes away, but it's still, who wants to drive there? We need to keep the money here. This was the place to go. People from Western Kansas came here to shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the Northwest District, beginning with Ms. Devon Reese.
Um, I just want people to know, I am personally against raising taxes, but I do think it is a choice that all of us should have. Um, I think the city, we need to learn how to stay within our budget. We do that at home. I also feel like revitalizing existing properties is a necessity, that we need to bring people back to town and keep us here. We need to grow Hutch by reducing taxes. I wanna be the voice of the people in the district. I'm a person who uses common sense to solve problems. And I just wanna reiterate that at the last city council meeting, the police chief and the city attorney both said homelessness is not the issue. It is mental illness and drugs. And talking to Mark Buckley downtown, his business is being destroyed, and he's put his life savings in it because of the looting, the, um, people who go there and block people from getting into his...
Thank you, Ms. Reese, and next, Ms. Stacy Goss.
Is this a one minute?
One minute, yes.
Okay, so I just wanna point out that one minute's absolutely not enough time to, um, give you a, a full review of who I am as a person. Uh, I do wanna say thank you for coming tonight. Um, as I hope you saw, my responses tonight are grounded in vision, experience, and practical solutions. Um, and my service on council has been the same. Um, we're not done yet. There is a lot on the horizon for Hutch. This is our budget for this year, and if, if a, if a candidate can't say specifically what they want to cut, I would encourage them to read it, because there are things that we can cut. There are always things that we could cut. Um, every single cut that we make has an impact on you as a resident. If it's your park that's in your neighborhood, that impacts your home value. If it's your street that's not getting repaved, that impacts everything about your daily life. Um, and, and the issues go on, so every cut has a trickle-down effect. Um, we can't just say across the board, "We're gonna cut, cut, cut." We're gonna lose staff. We're gonna have projects that don't come to Hutch. Um, and, and just blanket cuts are absolutely not the solution. Like I said, one minute's not enough.
Thank you, Ms. Goss, and for the Southwest District, we'll begin with Mr. Winters.
Oh, I thank you all for coming and hearing me out today. I know I am young and inexperienced, and I threw out some scary words tonight, like rent-controlling communist. Um, I just want you all to know I am dedicated to this community, and that dedication won't end this November. Win or lose, I will make sure that I will, or I will stay committed to bringing a brighter future for Hutchinson and, uh, bringing a Hutchinson that can be the pride of Kansas again. And so, yeah, thank you all for taking the time out of your days to be here and listen to all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Winters, and we'll close with Mr. Greg Fast.
Well, thank you all for being here. I hope that, uh, and thank you for being here, Kayden. I've learned a lot tonight, and I, uh, I would just continue to talk about, uh, relationships. I, I appreciate the time I've spent on council. Every day, I realize how little I know. I hope I know more after three and a half years. Um, I have a lot to learn, but I am learning it, creating relationships, and I will, I will work hard for you as I feel like I have, and, and, uh, please, I, I would appreciate your vote if you're in the Southwest District, and any other concerns that you might have, I'd be happy to hear those. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Fast. Well, on behalf of the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank all of you for personally putting yourselves out there, running for office. It's one of the opportunities we have in this country and the freedoms we have to get involved in our community, and it's not an easy task, and it's not easy to stand up here, sit up here on the stage. So thank you all for taking your time this evening to do that. Let's give these folks a round of applause. Thank you also to the folks in the audience for getting involved. I encourage everyone to get out and vote on November fourth, and feel free to stick around and, and greet the candidates and ask some more questions, since obviously one-minute closing wasn't enough. Thank you all.